I'd like to call the January 12, 2012, meeting of Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newsy.
Here.
Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Mr. Friling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Our first order of business today of council minutes from the meetings of December 5, December 8, and the special meeting of December 5, 2011. Are there any additions or corrections? No, I'll take a motion to...
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve the meeting minutes from December 5 and December 8, 2011, and the special meeting minutes from December 5, 2011.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsy.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Next order of business are matters of special privilege, and before we get to the real matter of special privilege, I wanted to remind everyone that we had a joint meeting this last Monday with James City County and York County Boards of Supervisors. That was videotaped, and that tape will, I think, begin airing on Channel 48 tomorrow. So those of you that were not able to be there but would like to see that meeting, it will be available on Channel 28. Now, we get to one of those moments periodically where we get to recognize one of our own, and this is an important recognition because it comes from fellow employees. And today, we have an excellence in service to Williamsburg Award for Stormwater Technician, Rob DeBellas. Bob, would you come forward and meet me? We have several things for you. First, there's a proclamation, and let me read that. And this is, "City Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Robert DeBellas for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Bob DeBellas has faithfully and effectively served the Williamsburg public for over 23 years. As stormwater technician in the street department, he is responsible for success of the city's stormwater management program and for the mosquito control program. At dusk, June through September, Bob sprays for mosquitoes every Wednesday, and he offers assistance to residents with mosquito control issues on their property. Bob is a certified stormwater inspector who dedicates a majority of his time to stormwater management. He has inspected nearly every stormwater manhole, pipe, and outfall, and all 75 of the stormwater treatment structures located throughout the city. Bob installed 193 stormwater medallions on catch basins instructing us all to save the bay by not putting anything improper into storm drains. He has developed a detailed map of the stormwater system, providing the locations and conditions of all pipes and structures. He is the go-to employee on questions about the stormwater system, taking the initiative to find and fix problems on his own. As a member of the street division, he is also a key player in both snow removal and leaf collection. Because of Bob, Williamsburg is a safer, cleaner, and healthier place to live for current and future generations. He is hereby recognized for his dedication to excellence in keeping with the best traditions of public service in the city of Williamsburg dated this day, and signed by me as mayor and Jack Tuttle as city manager." Bob, congratulations. We also have a plaque that you can put in your home or your office. And would you like to say a few words?
Yeah.
I can't do things without...
For real brief, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Holman, and the city council for this honor and this award. Also, I'd like to thank the Public Works Director, Mr. Clayton, and the past city manager, Frank Forrest, for hiring me for this job 23 years ago. Most of all, I'd like to thank my parents for instilling in me a good work ethic. My dad was a machinist who worked long hard days to support his family. My mom also worked hard as an RN for 35 years. Many times, she reminded me that you should always earn your keep. I tried to live up to that standard. I have a rewarding job in stormwater management, knowing that the work I do helps protect the environment of our great city and the Chesapeake Bay. Thanks again.
And thank all of these fellow employees who've been here today to meet the table. Again, that's...those awards are really meaningful, both for the city and for the employee and for all our employees, and I think it's important that we take a moment to do that periodically, so thank you. The next order of business is a public hearing, and this is public hearing PCR-11-022, the request of the Williamsburg-James City County Public Schools for a special use permit to install two classroom trailers at Berkeley Middle School through July 2017. Looks like Carolyn has a presentation for us.
Yes, Mayor Holman and members of council, this is a special use permit request, as you stated, for two classroom trailers behind Berkeley Middle School, as shown here on the overhead. The applicant proposes the trailers for five years based on anticipated increased enrollment over the next several years. The enrollment increase for the fall of 2012 is 942 students, which is 58 students over capacity, is their anticipated enrollment. Planning Commission held a public hearing last month. No citizens spoke on their request, and they recommended that city council approve the special use permit for the two classroom trailers, condition upon their removal by July 2017. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Alan Robertson from the school division is also here, and Bruce Abbott from AES, who did the survey and site plan for it, is also here if you have any questions of them.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Carolyn. Any questions at this point for Carol?
I had a question for somebody, I don't know who. These are new trailers, right? Or are they...
Alan, would you introduce yourself, please?
Certainly. Alan Robertson, I'm the facilities manager for the school division.
These are new trailers?
Yes.
And this is where the trailers have always been at Berkeley, right? Same place? Just for that part. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point? Okay. If not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this issue to please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and come back to council for any questions or discussion. And action.
Trailers are an interesting concept, one that I think is very frustrating to members of the community, to parents, students, and I'm sure to the faculty as well. I'm just thinking about my daughter who's in fourth grade right now, Matthew Whaley, and I'm realizing that through her entire career at Berkeley, assuming she makes it that far, she'll have trailers as part of her school experience, and even a year beyond when she's in high school. But the reality is, what's our alternative? Because we don't have the capacity to continue to cram students into the existing built facility. We could probably ask, or the school board could consider some degree of spot redistricting, which comes with its own problems and pitfalls. And we don't, as a school division, as a governing body that supports a school division, have the resources now to build another school if we wanted to. It does bring us back to the question about the repurposing of James Blair, but at this point, there's not much value in rehashing that. I really don't see that we have any alternative. I do think that as regrettable as trailers can be to the academic experience, they are far better than overcrowding existing facilities any more than they currently are.
Yeah, thank you.
I would agree with everything Paul said, and looking specifically at what's on our agenda today, it's the placement of two trailers behind Berkeley Middle School. The discussion about why they were needed is a discussion for another day, so for today's plan, I have no concerns.
Well, and I echo that. I think, you know, and I have a student child at Berkeley, and she may or may not be in the trailer. I had one last year, two years ago, I think, and she was in a trailer, and her education wasn't impeded in any way. So I think it's a fine resource using trailers when you have these type of pressure situations where we're overpopulated in one school. And as previously mentioned, perhaps there could have been another alternative of rezoning, you know, some students to move them around, but I think that is challenging. I'm going to support putting the trailers in, but I don't want it to be a support for lack of planning into the future, whether that's how we repurpose James Blair, when we do that, how that can happen. You know, so my support is contingent that we still have to work to find adequate classroom space within appropriate structures.
I'll just echo what's been said, and again, this is a temporary solution to a problem, and we have to continually remind ourselves that it is a temporary solution, it's not a long-term solution. And again, I think we make the best of what we have, so thank you. I'll come to council for any action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of PCR-11-022.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsy.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Thank you, and Scott and Alan, thank you for being here as well. Our next order of business are reports. The first of the monthly financial statements. Jack, is there anything in particular...
Yes, I thought I would point out, on the first page, you'll notice at the bottom of the right-hand column, if you look at our revenues through six months of this year compared to last year, very close to level, actually down a little bit, down about $160,000 from where we were at the same time last year, mainly due to our continuing declining real estate values. And, but nevertheless, fairly level there. Expenditures are up over $1 million from the same point last year, and if we look back in the further pages, you can pull that out pretty easily. About half of that is education spending, running $550,000 ahead where it was last year, partly because our budget has grown. The other reason is just the way the allocations have fallen, we're a little bit ahead of where we were last year. Also, in the public works department, we're $230,000 of greater spending, but all of that is related to the hurricane, and we expect to receive a reimbursement from FEMA before the year is out that should put most of that back in. And then, public safety, running $270,000 over where we were last year. It's a very large area, involves police department and significantly the jail and Merrimack Center, both costing more this year than they did last year. So all in all, it's nothing that's unexpected at this point, but nevertheless, it does point, if you look at where we were at the same time last year, right now, we're...our revenues with the tax collections having just come in, we're running about $180,000 to the good on the year so far because we've just had this receipt of tax, property tax. At this time last year, however, we were $1.4 million to the good, so that tells you a pretty sizable difference between this year and last year. What that tells us when we take a look at this is that while we will continue, this year's budget will be executed within budget, and we'll come out at the end of this year with a surplus, but we don't, the finance director and I do not expect that to be anywhere near what we saw with last year's budget, where we ended the year with the $2.3 million surplus. So we'll still be in the black, but nowhere near to that magnitude at the end of this year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just observation, the Colonial Service Board is already at, through the first six months, at the budgeted amount. Is there something...
Well, again, that's just when the finance director sends the check to them.
Okay.
And it's a matter of the timing. All of that will be spent every year.
And we're going to have a discussion a bit later about the budget process as well.
Yes, and we get to budget process, I'll have a little bit more to say about looking forward.
Any other questions on the financial report? Next of the monthly, Department of Operating Reports, anything in particular?
I had nothing in particular to point out this month.
A couple of things struck me looking at this, and I'm pretty pessimistic about the economy, but there are a couple of things that actually are glimmers of hope. New businesses compared to last year is a significant change. Parking garage is up significantly.
A little bit, yes, sir.
And electronic transactions are up a good bit, too, which is interesting. I wonder if some point, we might have Mark report to us, or Phil, or whoever, about sort of what's going on there and what further we might be able to do in that area.
Sure.
But another area is, if you look at tanif and food stamps, they are a good indicator that things are still really tough out there, but there are glimmers of hope.
And regarding the parking garage, it was just a remarkable number of people in town the last two weeks of December, particularly in the downtown area, which may have contributed to some great degree to that increase.
Isn't the parking garage also because of the students renting the spaces?
There's a small number of spaces set aside that we allow for student rental, but they're rented up, as far as I know, and have been for some time, so I don't think that's a change.
That's not a change.
And that's the same with the monthly...
The monthly, and the monthly fees are considerably less, so to speak, per hour than the daily parking fees, so by far and away, the significant revenue source will be the customers using the facility on a few hours at a time.
Good.
And any other questions or comments? If not, we have city manager reports, and we have four. Jack?
Yes, the first one deals with budget process, and we sent out to you a memo that gives the key dates. I think we've got a slide, too, that can go up if somebody could read, if you could hit that button. So what I wanted to do was, there we go, just go over some of the key budget dates, and also note at the top, that web address is, will be open for business, WilliamsburgVA.gov, open forum, and we hope to use this throughout the budget process to both give information out and then elicit comment from citizens, and citizens can see one another's comments on the budget and the budget process, and so that'll be available for us as one of our primary means of public involvement and engagement in the budget process. Yesterday, I began a series of 12 small group meetings with groups of employees to discuss where we are and where we're going with the budget and also other concerns, so those will be going on throughout the rest of this month and into February. On the 21st, council holds its scheduled annual winter retreat where the financial outlook is more broadly discussed, and we get a preview of what we can expect in FY13. Then, Planning Commission has their role of providing input on the capital improvement program in the middle of February, and that will come back to city council. And then, the proposed budget itself will be issued on March 16, and on the early in the week following that, council holds its budget work sessions to discuss both the capital and operating budget, and also particular focus on major outside agency spending. Then, on the 7th of April is when I hope to meet with the neighborhood council of Williamsburg and get, for a time of dialogue on the budget with that group. And council's budget hearing at the council meeting in April, and our scheduled adoption date is May 10, and so that's, those are the key points on the schedule. Before we leave budget process, though, I thought I would point out three pieces of news that we've had in October, November, and December that will have major impacts on next year's budget. The first, and you're aware of each one of these because as the news came out, we've discussed it here. The first one was when we learned that we had a growth of 88 students in the city, which was more than 10% student growth at the same time James City County actually contracted, meaning that there will be a shift in cost on the school system from the county to the city of some magnitude that if, under the current contractual arrangement, if that were continued just as it is, amounts to approximately $750,000, three-quarters of a million dollars of cost shift. Then, the second piece of information we received was the Virginia retirement system came out with what we knew we would have a higher rate for contribution to, required to the VRS, but we now know how much, and that increase up to 21.29% of payroll for, across all funds, both general fund and utility fund, amounts to $430,000 of additional cost. And then, in December, the schools came out with their preliminary look at the future, given what they know about their retirement costs and the loss of federal and state funding, that the gap they're looking at is in the range right now of $7.5 million, and for us, that equates to, right again, about three-quarters of a million under the sharing formula with James City County. So you add all those up, just those three things alone is, represents $1.9 million, and would account for a 5.9% change in our operating budget. So, now, we do a budget, those are three variables, and we look at hundreds of others over the next several months before we end up with a budget, but that's not good news coming into this process, and we know next year will be very challenging.
Well, on top of that, we really, thanks to you and others, the last number of years, we really have, this is a trim operation, so there's not a lot of wiggle room.
We don't see opportunities that, as many as we might like, but there are still some there, and we'll be discussing those with you.
Two comments.
The first is relating to the budget, a major part, obviously, is the school funding, and this Saturday at 9 o'clock in the James Blair Cafeteria, the school board will be holding an open discussion of their budget and how they plan to accomplish bridging that $7.5 million gap. So for folks who are interested in that, they may want to attend. The other is, well, the other is a question. When will we get, since we're contractually bound, and assuming that continues into the next year with James City County on the joint funding, when will we have news of their decision about funding which will drive ours?
Unfortunately, their budget, they will release their budget several weeks after ours, so we're going to have to make some assumptions based on, which is not unusual, you make assumptions based on what the General Assembly will do, we don't know that when our budget comes out. We'll be making some assumptions of what the county will do, but in the past, we have generally taken the superintendent's budget as it exists at that time, and the best information we have, and assume that for purposes of preparing our proposed budget, even though it is not yet adopted either at the school level, nor has the county even come out with their proposed yet. So it's prospective, and it could change, but generally have a pretty good idea by the middle of March, how things are going to fall out.
But the actual number we will get sometime in April, May?
It will be in April. The other piece involved in this is we still have to complete the renegotiation of the five-year agreement, and that could play in as well. So this year, it could well be that we'll be coming back and looking at this in late April, prior, in a way we haven't had to do in the past, if we're still waiting for critical information before we can make a final decision.
And I just want a question. We have up there May 10, the city council budget adoption, but that can be pushed to June if necessary.
Yes, yes, that does give you that room.
When do we expect the superintendent's proposed budget?
That's a good question, and I don't recall the exact date, I'm looking for Phil. It is in February at some point.
So we...
Yeah, it's not that far off.
Great. Sorry. Scott?
Well, just commentary, I mean, Jack's right, you know, it looks grim, you know, when we consider, you know, these added budget expenses, and, you know, really is going to put a strain on things, as we have been running lean, and, you know, from my perspective in business, you know, you can cut, but so much before, you know, things really change in terms of the services you can deliver, and so, you know, it puts a burden back on revenue side, and how do we generate revenue? And of course, you know, in my mind, it's in the registers of the businesses in the city that really has to be the first priority, to try to do what we can to make sure that that's happening.
Just for a little more information, the decline in assessments, is there any particular properties? Is it houses? Is it commercial? Is it everything?
The, we've been seeing declines in assessments over the last two cycles. We'll see more decline in this cycle. That's another thing, actually, at budget time, we'll still be estimating based on having not yet completed the roll yet, but the assessor's best estimate on what will come out. But I believe we'll still continue to see some decline across both sectors, both residential and business, commercial.
But those declines have been relatively mild compared to what most localities are facing.
Yes, our residential values have held up pretty well, and our commercial values were holding up pretty well, but, and again, it's a difference between the sectors. We've seen particular weakness in the hotel sector, whereas other retail establishments and restaurants seem to be holding up well in terms of their property values. That's a general statement, it's up to John Mattson to try to get that precise.
The other thing that becomes challenging with assessments is they're based on actual sales, and so if housing stock doesn't move through the market, there's no comparable sale to base the new value of the home on, and so people may feel as though the value of their home has declined, unless there are sales that demonstrate that. You can't be assessed that way.
That's true, and on the commercial side, you're looking for the same information, you're looking for comparable sales, and you're also looking at the income base of the business to make a determination as to value.
Well, we're going to all face some challenges, but we have a good council and a good staff to help us work through it. Thanks. Next report is the award of contract to replace the softball field lighting at QuarterPath Park.
Parks and Recreation Director Lori Ryerson will give this report.
Hello, Mayor.
Welcome.
Members of council, good afternoon. The FY12 Capital Improvement Program budgets for upgrades to the softball fields at QuarterPath Park. Fields number one and two are scheduled to have the lights and poles replaced, and all three fields are budgeted for the new computer lighting controls. Factors used in the decision to upgrade include, number one, the age, the lights on fields number one and two were installed in 1971 and 1977 respectively. Second factor is to reduce energy consumption. The new lights are expected to save approximately $2,000 per year in electrical cost. The third factor is to reduce glare and spill of the lighting, and this is a sample of the Musco Light Structure Green lighting, and this particular, excuse me, lighting puts 75% more light on the field with less glare and spill compared to the existing lights. And the fourth factor is the ease of control and warranty. The ControlLink computer system provides a remote access for functions 24/7 and comes with a 25-year warranty. By using a cooperative procurement clause from a bid process recently used in the city's Suffolk for a similar project, Branham Electric is proposing to complete the project as planned, as well as replace the lights and poles on field number three at a cost of $472,800. Technology afforded by the new lights and poles on all three fields will result in a more consistent lighting environment... result in a more consistent lighting environment, offer easier maintenance, and eliminate the inevitable replacement of the poles and lights on field three within the next few years. By taking advantage of the cooperative procurement, there are savings of approximately $39,000 per field compared to the quote that we received this fall. The CIP project as planned is budgeted in the amount of $330,000. Funding for the additional scope of this project would come from a transfer of $97,000 from the budgeted CIP doctor placement project at Waller Mill Park, and the remaining $45,800 from a capital contingency. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Lori. One question, how do these lights compare to the lights, say, that the college put around the football practice field or that we have at Quanis Park?
Is there exactly what we have at Quanis Park?
Right, so, and they really have made a difference?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Lori, could you talk a little bit about the budget amount of $330,000, the savings of $39,000 per field with cooperative purchase agreement with Suffolk, and yet it's still about $150,000 or $140-some thousand more than we had originally budgeted?
That's because we're adding, we're asking to have the third field with replacement of poles and lights.
So given everything that we've just discussed about the tight finances, why then is this project particularly important, obviously more so than the replacement of the dock at Waller Mill? Is it because of the opportunity to work cooperatively with Suffolk, or is there some other safety issue related to the park?
Well, the lights were scheduled to be replaced, and we were only going to replace the fields one and two, but when we were able to get this much better pricing through the cooperative procurement, we are asking if we can go ahead and do all three fields because field three is going to have to be replaced within the next few years.
And is field three currently in the CIP?
It's in the CIP for a later year, so it was to come, it was going to hit us a few years, a few years down the road, or was it next year? It was fairly...
It was, I think it was like three years.
Three years out, okay. And so, as we discuss this, it seemed to make sense to do the entire project here, defer Waller Mill, and take the savings from that, and do this, and do Waller Mill at a later date. And that way, we're in there at one time, we're doing the whole job at one time rather than in two pieces, and we had a pretty long discussion about this, and with just those questions you just asked, and came up with our judgment that this was the best way to go.
Is it fair to say then that the cost savings, because of the cooperative purchase agreement with Suffolk, helped drive the decision to do the third field?
It did, it did. It seemed a real shame not to take advantage of that now and do the entire job, rather than just do two-thirds of the job and then come back in a couple of years and do the, and then still need the other piece, and end up costing us more in the long run.
Thank you.
Scott?
Just a general question for public interest, can you just go over all the different groups of folks that use these fields?
Sure. We have an adult softball program, and during the spring and summer program, we had 44 teams. During our fall program, we had 44 teams, and during our fall, the preseason tournament, we had 14 teams. Then we have youth tournaments, and this past year, we had five, and we have adult softball tournaments, and we had two this year. Then we had two organizations that actually rented the fields for their leagues, and that was Busch Gardens and a kickball league.
Got you. So are these fields used by, you know, folks that'll drive in from elsewhere to play in a tournament here?
Yes.
Got you. Thanks.
Well, and just to kind of add to that, my thought is, you know, if we can enhance the quality of the park, enhance the experience, that there may be an opportunity to enhance, you know, residual revenue that's associated with it, whether it's used directly with the park, or the fact that, you know, people within the general, the larger community drive into the city, buy some gas across the street, and bag of ice, and some sodas, and so, you know, there's some spinoff from having fields that, you know, that are modern and people want to play at and utilize, so, you know. Having said that, looking at the expense side of things, you know, one has to question the timeliness of it, but I think it's, you know, it's been in the CIP, and so it's something I can support.
I think it makes a lot of sense. The dock at Waller Mill isn't actually falling apart. I don't think I was out there not long ago, and it seemed all right, so I think this just makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, that was going to be my question about the Waller Mill, you know, delaying that, do you see any real downsides to doing that?
No.
At this point, okay.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
The sense I get from the layout at QuarterPath is that the space that we have is not efficient, as efficiently used as it is in some of the other parks, is, and I guess by putting in this lighting system, we're making the decision that we would not, anywhere near, in the next several decades, look at redesigning the whole layout in order to make better use of the facilities?
Given the land at the lot, the way it's configured, three fields in a linear row is the only way you could lay out that particular piece of property. You have a subdivision on one side, and then a golf course, and you have, in other words, there'd be no way to reconfigure the field that I, that we can foresee if you're going to have three full-size softball fields. So different situation entirely when we made the decision at Quanis, where that could be relayed out to allow four full-size fields at, when we finally get to the fourth field. So I don't think there's a better way to, practically speaking, a better way to do this at QuarterPath. Would you agree with that?
I agree.
One thing I would just like to ask, and I asked this of Mr. Hudson over and over again, and never quite got anywhere, but at some point, if we look at upgrading the fields themselves, putting dirt strips along the fence lines on the interior of the playing surface would be a huge safety upgrade for the people playing, because currently, there's no way to tell as somebody's tracking a ball that they're about to approach a chain link fence.
And we have actually talked about that recently, about including those.
Thank you.
Warning track.
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, I'll turn to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of, I don't know if I'm saying it right.
The city council authorized the city manager to execute a contract in the amount of $472,800 with Branham Electric to install computerized lighting controls and replace the lighting on all softball fields at QuarterPath Park. That's what she meant.
That's what I heard.
Have a motion, a second. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
The next report is accepting certain streets into the city's street system. This is proposed resolution 12-01. Mr. Clayton?
Okay. Mayor, members of council, you have before you today resolution number 12-01, which accepts several streets into the city's street system, and also requests VDOT to reimburse us maintenance payments. VDOT requires a council resolution and their approval process, so that's, this is why this is before you. Basically, there are seven streets we're submitting to VDOT for approval. The first three there are located in the High Street area, and the next three, Green Street, Park Place, and Lewis Burrow Place, they're in villages of QuarterPath. And finally, the section, the new section of QuarterPath Road from Route 199 to the shopping center there, that's the, that's the last road we have. So our total of all these, they pay us based on a lane mile basis, and our total is 2.62 lane miles of road we're adding into our system, and that equates to an annual payment of about $27,000 per year. So we're asking that you folks approve this resolution so we can move forward with VDOT.
Any questions for Mr. Clayton?
Mr. Clayton, if we don't accept these streets into the city system, we don't get the VDOT reimbursement of $29,000 per year. What's the other impact?
Well, we've already, they were approved as public, when we, the subdivisions were being constructed and designed and whatnot, they were approved as public streets, so we will kind of accept these. We just had to make sure they met our criteria and they met VDOT's criteria, so...
So really, it's just a formality now that all the inspections are approved and taking place?
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
At 2.26 lane miles and $27,000 a year, and these primarily being new roads, is that better than break even?
If you, in the total picture, we, we actually spend a little bit more than what VDOT pays us for our streets. Of course, we want to be doing that, because if we don't spend what they pay you, then they're not going to pay you.
Got you.
So we tend to be, we tend to spend a little bit more overall on our whole street budget than what we, we take in from VDOT, but it's not too far off.
Got you.
Well, maybe I didn't quite hear the answer, maybe, maybe the question was different. If we decide not to accept these streets into the city's system...
We still maintain them.
Well, I, okay, go ahead.
I mean, we'll still have to maintain them, we still have to accept the cost, or do we not have to maintain them?
Now, we've gone into this thing with the developer that these are public streets.
Okay.
And we've made them, billed them to city standards, VDOT standards, so that was decision made a long time ago. Most, we do want our streets to be public streets, because there are some private streets in the city that aren't as well maintained.
And all of these street systems were paid for by the developers?
Yes, sir.
None of them cost city residents?
Correct.
Okay, any further questions? If not, I'll come back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of resolution 12-01.
Say. Have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. Final city manager report is trash can enclosure briefing.
Yes, Carol Murphy is coming up. I'll just kick it off by saying in July, we had a presentation on screening refuse containers, and you asked staff and Carolyn to go back and have a conversation with the neighborhood council of Williamsburg and get their thoughts on it, and so she's back here to report, and we'll take it from there.
Mayor, members of council, last July, I gave a presentation on possible trash and recycling container regulations. At that meeting, you instructed me to meet with neighborhood council of Williamsburg to get feedback on possible regulations. Before I get in their feedback, I want to briefly review what we discussed in July. And on this slide, slide is basically the possible regulations, and one thing we can do is prohibit containers in our front or side yard if visible from a public street except on pickup day. We can prohibit containers in our front yard except on pickup day. We can prohibit containers in a side yard if adjacent to a public street, requiring timeframes on pickup days for containers to be at the curb, and those timeframes can range from 4:00 AM to midnight on the day of pickup, to 5:00 PM to the day before pickup, and then by midnight, or any other combination you so desire. Requiring the containers to be screened when located in a side or rear yard if visible from a public street, and requiring them to be stored, anywhere stored on the property, so... The next thing we could do is regulations, I briefed you on that regulations on screening, which consists of maybe fencing or landscaping of containers, must be a part of the zoning ordinance and will make existing conditions non-conforming. Regulations other than the screening can be a part of Chapter 12 nuisance or Chapter 14, the silent waste in the city code. Enforcement, we thought, would be by the code compliance division, and we talked about that being on a complaint basis only or performed when inspectors make neighborhood inspections for property maintenance. Then we would need to decide whether this is a civil penalty or misdemeanor violation. I met with neighborhood council of Williamsburg in November. Several individuals spoke on the request. I think everyone agreed that containers should not be left at the curb in front yards because they are unsightly. Concerns were raised about the city requiring screening and the cost associated with screening for individuals, especially those on fixed incomes. It was noted that larger recycling containers with tops would help because smaller ones are too small, and when left at the curb, allow recycling materials to blow down the street. This is some areas we could use to do the regulations if we so desired. We could do it citywide on the left-hand side, or we could do it as part of our housing conservation districts. The next steps is that city council needs to decide if an ordinance is warranted. If so, where and what specifics? And if you direct staff to do that, we can draft up an ordinance for your review. I would note that staff has been bouncing around this problem, and we think that maybe the neighborhood relations committee might be able to help. This idea has been floated about creating a customs and courtesy flyer in which neighbors and neighborhoods could take on certain responsibilities. This flyer will have four or five common courtesies. For instance, if someone leaves their recycling or trash bin at the street, neighbors could help relocate them to the side of the dwelling. Another one could be picking up trash in your neighborhood along the curb and sidewalks. Just a note, I personally pick up trash when I walk from my neighborhood downtown and around downtown. I do this because I want to present a positive image of our city. It only takes a few minutes of my time, and I don't have to report it to the city, which takes a considerable amount of time and effort before an issue is resolved. On Thanksgiving, I would note, I personally went around certain downtown neighborhoods to relocate trash in recycling containers because I knew students had left for the weekend, and I wanted neighborhoods to look good for family members when they visited. Both of these are examples, I think, where neighbors can help with certain issues in our neighborhoods. This is another option to see if we can resolve the issue without having a regulation for enforcement to keep our city beautiful for our citizens and visitors to our cities. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Carol.
I'd just like to share a comment, and I was at the neighborhood council meeting when Ms. Murphy raised the topic, and there was much discussion about it, and there was very little agreement. There were wide-ranging opinions about what should be required, what shouldn't be required, what the city should be doing, what the city should not be getting into, and I didn't leave there with any feeling that there was a consensus, except maybe that containers shouldn't be left at the street for days on end. So to that end, I particularly appreciate the thought about working, neighbors working together in the community, particularly for students who are here, or not here over certain periods of time, but want the refuse or recycling picked up so it's not still there when they return. You know, some cooperative efforts there to move the empty containers after they've been dealt with could go a long way to help here, but I, I know there are specific areas and other specific properties where some neighbors are less considerate of those living around them than others, but at the same time, I wonder if we don't go a little bit too far by trying to legislate a solution before we really explore other avenues of promoting greater cooperation among and within the neighborhoods.
I would definitely agree with the cooperative model. I don't think it's good for neighborhood relations to set up another ordinance where one neighbor is, I shouldn't use the word picking, but essentially picking on another neighbor for something they've just, may just be absent mindedness. I do like your idea of, it's almost like, it's not quite, it's something similar to neighborhood watch, but essentially a neighborhood, individual neighborhood ethic on taking care of this. If we can do this without passing an ordinance, I think that would be best.
Yeah, that's my sense as well. I'm not in favor of, you know, writing new ordinances to cause people, you know, our residents any more heartache and, you know, expensive having to construct something, but Ms. Murphy, I think, you know, what you've done, going out on your own personal time to do, you know, to pick up some trash containers and help tidy up things, is exactly the type of attitude that's going to solve this issue if it is an issue. You know, neighbors who care about their neighborhoods see something that's easily rectifiable, you know, take a few minutes out of your time and, you know, pick up the container and put it in the back. I think that's perfectly acceptable. So thank you for going over and above on that, and I, you know, I'd like to think that our neighborhoods and the residents would do the same thing when they see a problem.
Well, I, I agree that I don't like the idea of an ordinance. I think it's probably overkill. However, there is an example in our neighborhood of a person who will not only never move his garbage cans, but would probably sue a neighbor who attempted to do it for him, so...
That is a conversion.
I live in a different world, maybe in a different neighborhood, but I do hope we can resolve this, and I like the idea of the neighborhood relations committee. I suspect that, for example, with the students, they don't even think about it. You know, I mean, it just, you put it out there because it's Wednesday, and that's the day you're supposed to put it out there, and we should be happy they're putting it out there. So it, I hope we can resolve it within the neighborhoods. Maybe a little more talk, not only with neighborhood relations, but, you know, the neighborhood council, they do have a network, an email network.
Yeah, and I, I think the consensus here is that it's not, it's not a pervasive problem throughout the community. There are particular situations that are problematic, but, but there may be better ways to do it than a, than a general piece of legislation that deals with the whole thing. So I like Carolyn and Jack's idea of maybe coming up with a list of common, you know, courtesies and, what's the phrase that you used?
Chloe, we, actually, this is stolen. Chloe used to use the phrase customs and courtesies to talk about just the way the ne- to talk about, just the way, the normal ethic. I don't think they use it anymore, so I think we probably could use it if we like.
But I, and a lot of it is the neighborhood relations committee, the neighborhood council just, you know, encouraging neighbors to think as neighbors and, you know, pitch in. And again, there are going to be, there are going to be those cases that just, this isn't going to deal with, but I think they are minimal across the city.
I do, too.
Do you like the idea of empowering neighborhoods to solve the problems on their own rather than have them rely strictly on calling the city building?
Carol?
Go ahead.
No, just, I want to, could I make a couple of comments when you're done?
Yeah, Carolyn, I think if you would convey the consensus of this discussion to the neighborhood relations committee and I will at my next report to the neighborhood council do the same thing that, and then maybe as staff, if you could work in putting together what would be sort of a model statement of courtesies and customs, that would be very useful.
I'd be happy to do that. I'd be happy to go to neighborhood council again and sort of ask for their help also.
Yeah, great.
One of the reasons it's not pervasive throughout the entire city is that we have some neighborhoods with very strict regulations that are established by the homeowners association. And having lived in one of those communities, I can also tell you that there are plenty of people who live within the community who bristle at some of the, I don't want to call it draconian, but strict requirements that are in place. I do have a question and another comment, though. We're talking about containers. One of the other issues that I've seen, again, in some of the neighborhoods closer to the college is not that the container itself is as much of the problem as what was put into the container, didn't quite all make it into the container or didn't find itself able to stay in the container. And so it becomes spreading over a larger area. Is that a current violation of code compliance?
Well, it's a trash violation if it's in your yard or if it's on the street. Usually someone will pick it up. That's part of the thing that I was mentioning that I do when I go out for my walk. A lot of times, you know, in the evening, if you happen to put your container out and it's real windy that night, some of those items get blown down the street. So when I go out for a walk, I always take my little bag with me and I put all those things in there and I drop it off in a trash container. So, but if it's in the yard and it's not being picked up out of the container, then code compliance can cite them for a trash violation.
I'm speaking more about that latter example than the former, where, not where there's been any sort of wind event, but clearly the person intending, maybe intending to put the trash in the trash can isn't quite following through.
And I think we're trying to look at, I think Mr. Clayton mentioned to me that they're looking at, maybe looking at the size of recycling containers later on when they look at the renewal on that. So that might help also. But that's a good example of, I think, where neighbors can help out. If you're going for a walk, just pick up a few things, put it in a trash container and it'll make the neighborhood look a lot nicer.
And things do happen. And based upon your great example that you've shared with us, that we could probably all learn something from, I think it'd be beneficial if you could encourage the neighborhood relations committee and the neighborhood council to talk about whether it makes sense to do periodic neighborhood sweeps or just ask the neighborhoods if they want to organize those. And the compound effect across the entire city could be really beneficial. Not that there's a lot of trash floating around, but every little bit of cleanup helps.
You mentioned size of containers. And I've talked to several residents who would like to have those larger containers. I don't know where that fits into the discussion, but there certainly seems to be some support amongst some, though, that would like the option of a larger container.
Okay. Carolyn, you got your marching orders. Thank you very much. Next report or city attorney reports, anything?
I have nothing today.
Okay, nothing. Schedule of meetings for January, Jack, is there anything?
Nothing in particular to point out that we haven't already.
Okay. Next order of business is unfinished business, anything there? I don't believe so. Under new business, we will have a closed session discussion about appointments to boards and commissions. There's no action at this point. That brings us to our final agenda item for the day and that's open forum, a time when anyone who wishes to address council on any matter may do so. If you wish to address council, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, I will, I believe we have some business for closed session.
Why, yes, we do. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per sub-paragraph one concerning appointments and one legal matter per sub-paragraph seven for the purpose of consultation on specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by council concerning legal updates.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Fons?
Aye.
Mr. Frye?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye. We'll take a five-minute recess.